It's seven oh five, so I'll open the meeting. Town of Cohasset zoning board is now Tuesday, May second nineteen twenty-three. Seven oh five P M. We're on another virtual Zoom meeting and I don't want to take time up immediately, but. Cassandra, if the if the select board can meet in person and the town meeting can meet in person, why can't we?
So part of it is logistics with figuring out presentations from applicants for both. The board's viewing and the public's viewing because the town would like to still be able to have the hybrid option. And we haven't figured out the equipment for how applications would be presented.
So that. Why do we have to have a Zoom? A Zoom call and why don't we start meeting in person and when the town fig gets this act together? The public can be invited in a Zoom, otherwise we go back to the way we've operated for fifty years.
Do we really wanna risk going inside that town hall?
Well, for other reasons, I'm just thinking about health reasons, Mike. We're okay. Whatever else is in there might be catching, but. Anyway, I don't know, I I I mean. I I don't understand why why we're being singled out and prevented from having a live meeting when other boards can meet in person. But maybe I should speak to the chair of the select board. Is that up to him?
Uh, I think right now it's up to town management, so Chris.
Okay, well, I'll talk to both then, but not just to Chris. Okay, Jack and Chris. I mean, this just seems another another delay, delay, delay. Anyway, we're we're open for business. Uh, the first uh, sitting as a board of appeals and myself, Woody Chitik is chair, Dave McMorris is vice chair. Um, Matt Watkins, Michael Dickey and Lee Darst is our associates. And Charlie Higginson is our third regular member has just joined. Charlie, you're on mute. John Helen is uh, sitting in. For uh, context and advice, our our building commissioner. So I think we're ready to go. The first hearing is a continuance. From last time filed by Jamie Suvak at sixty-two Spring Street to extend a a porch and actually cover it. Without enclosing it and any other relief as we deem necessary. Uh, the applicant is here. Okay. Turn it over to you.
Hi, uh, thank you for having us back. I apologize. I um, am in bed because I'm recovering from spine surgery, so.
Something small and.
So that's why I'm a little casual today, but I apologize.
That's perfectly.
So I think um, last time we were asked for a couple of more things and if I could have permission to share my screen.
You have permission.
Okay, so everybody can see this document. There are some more pictures um, and a drawing that. John did to show uh, what this would look like, so.
I've got I've got a title. Okay, go ahead.
So this is just um, the view from our front door with the current porch that is there. Um, a the across the street, you can see it's just the train tracks that is across. And that is a picture of the front of the house as it is now. That's just another view and you can see where the stakes are. Um, is where we want to extend the porch, just to have an actual view of what we're looking to do. That shows um, what is on the right side of our house. Uh, that is a six unit apartment building. And that is the two family that's on the other side of the house. With the similar, uh, that's the type of porch we would be looking to put on the front, so that gives an idea of what we're looking to. What it would look like on our house. And that's just another view from the front of the porch to show kind of what's in front of us. There's not another house or, you know, other things like that. So um, what John did here was draw the picture of what we're looking to do. From the measurements that he had done. I don't know if you want to say anything about.
The the porch itself would still be seven feet by twenty-nine and a half feet, which would go from edge to edge of. The existing house and would come out this the seven and a half feet. The existing stairs would pretty much stay exactly where they were. They may they may go a little bit wider, but they wouldn't go beyond where they are right now.
Um, and that's 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 it. That's what we brought today.
Okay, I think one of the things we are going to need, uh, this is good and I can. I'll let the board ask questions, but we are gonna need um, dimensions. I mean, how tall is this? I mean, I know I can see this visually. But uh, Jamie just uh, I mean. I just mentioned that uh, the porch is going to extend X number of feet. I'd like to see that in writing. And and uh, kind of just specked out.
Okay, we 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 provided you first off with a drawing of the property by our surveyor and the surveyor did depict that it was. Uh, seven and a half by twenty-nine feet on that depiction. With our application, the only thing you wouldn't have right now is just the the height of the roof.
Height, yeah.
I mean, but that's it. It goes between the the first floor and the second floor. It doesn't extend above the second floor windows. It would be similar to the building that was.
Right, we talked about this before. Yeah, I I'd like to see the uh, all the dimensions of this.
Okay. Other than the height, other than the height of the porch, what are the dimensions that you're looking for? Because I don't wanna have to come back for another time for another set of dimensions. So I like to have what is missing. What is deficient in our application, so we don't have to, you know.
I think just to be sure, the size of the four or five uh, supports, support pillars. Um, I don't know if they're, you know, four by. Eight or whatever they are, but just put them in and and how tall, where where will the pitched roof? Uh, connect to the house, what's that height and what's the height of the pitched roof as it? Slops down, you know, at the end it's end. Just some some specifications so that we can incorporate them into a decision and. If if we do approve this, we'd we'd like to have that that be part of the record.
Okay.
Cause when we, cause when we um, come to a decision on the case, you know, to Woody's point, we typically include the. The materials that were submitted in the filing as part of, you know, the packet. I was just looking back and it looks like last time we were looking for um. You know, some sort of architectural drawing to clarify what it was exactly that you were looking for, and I think we can visualize it now, but. Without the dimensions. You know, to accompany the the written decision. It just helps to to clarify it. And the other thing I had in my notes here was just um, that we needed an updated. Front setback on the application itself. I don't have the application right in front of me, but. Um, I think we had a question about the front setback.
I don't remember that question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you you've listed the existing front setback is twenty-two point four. And the proposed at fifteen point four, in other words, coming out the seven feet. Uh, what is the twenty-two point four measured without the existing porch and without the existing stairway?
No, the the twenty-two feet. It would go down to fifteen because of the seven foot porch.
But you've already got a seven foot porch. So your setback should be measured from the from the existing porch presumably.
Yeah, and and it's important because. If it's if it's over twenty feet, you're conforming and if it's under, you're non-conforming and you wanna be non-conforming.
Okay.
Oh, you mean you mean the existing porch.
The existing setback.
The setback, yeah. So you have a you have a conforming house the way you've written it. I don't think you do.
No, we don't.
The statistics or the metrics show, it shows that you have a conforming house, you that you're making non-conforming. Um, to Dave's point. Um, that puts you in a variance territory, but I don't think. I don't think that's what's going on here. I think you have a non-conforming house.
I I think that's correct, so we have to. We fix that on the.
Yeah, so it it has to be corrected.
Okay.
Dave, is that what you were driving at?
Yes, I mean, maybe you know, it's helps with the application that um. Yeah, I I'm not not sure.
Yeah. Okay, alright.
Well, you know, if you need a little guidance, um, you're you're welcome to to see John or or Cassandra. Cassandra deals with this stuff. You know, uh, week after week, and I think she could kind of help you um. At at least point point to the to the right um, structure and dimensions. But I I I don't see this as a. I don't think it's a crisis. It's just that I think there there are some statistics here that that are missing or. Probably not in error and uh, are are in error and um, to your disadvantage.
Okay, makes sense. Go back, fix that.
Woody, if you if we'd like, we can um, Cassandra and I could uh, make those adjustments. Um, to kind of just put the proper numbers at the proper space.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, and again to follow up, but I think your suggestion of the the height uh, on the section. Information, we need that for the building permit so that. If they get to that point, so that it wouldn't be uh, something that they'd be doing just for you if they. You know, you guys voted this in, we we did it at the building department too, so um, we can we can work on that tomorrow updated and clean it up to. Get it to the proper uh, distance.
And and the procedure for the Suvac's um. Uh, benefit is that we get all the facts uh, that we can in front of us. Um, continue the hearing to for a draft decision that we could then um. Uh, deliberate on and vote on. Um, but the um, attachments, the exhibits have to be accurate. And complete. I mean, we can't, once we close or once we deliberate and file a decision, that's it. Whatever we have in hand is is what we go with.
So you need the the pillar dimensions, the height of the the roof and the the distance between of the pitch from the.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful and I think John, as he said, I mean, he deals, he's dealt with this for, you know, years and years, so I think he could give you some. Rather simple, you know, some actionable advice that isn't going to be terribly complicated, but it's stuff we need.
Okay, thank you.
That's my my takeaway. I don't know, John, is that right?
Yeah, I I again, I think uh, mostly information is there, but we just have to put it in the right spot for you guys to. Yeah, to to view it, you know, I think at least uh. Uh, with the information they get today, you you get a pretty good sense of.
Oh, indeed. It's just that we're not used to dealing with sketches, you know, conceptual sketches, that's all. And and you aren't either, because you're gonna need something more specific to issue a building permit, so. It all has to be done, might as well be done now.
And are you gonna have to go back to the engineer? Or to the surveyor?
Um, I think that would be more for the um. Oh, sorry, I might as pain meds and I lose my train of thought, the what is the the person just doing, no, the person doing the work.
Contractor.
Thank you, thank you, but we'll have to go back to the contractor.
Okay.
It's rough.
How about other questions in the part of the board?
I don't have any.
Anybody else? Charlie, got any issues or or just information requests?
I'm writing the decision.
Okay, well, I guess if anybody's got any any requests, it's gonna be you. Okay, how about uh, um, Matt, Mike, we okay?
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward, Woody. I I don't have any additional questions.
Okay, so you're, so I would make a motion that we continue this until our next hearing. At the beginning of June, at which time we will have a draft decision to deliberate on and vote on. I mean, I think this looks pretty cut and dry, and if uh, you guys can get together or one of you. Maybe Jamie, you can't, but maybe Michael can um, get together with uh, John. And and just prepare whatever we need to incorporate into the decision.
Yeah, that would be, that would be really.
Be ready to go.
Yeah, we're on.
Yep, thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you. So I've made a motion to continue this hearing until June. Uh, what is it, fourth, does Cassandra or? Am I wrong?
It is the sixth.
For June sixth, okay, continue to June sixth. Second, seconded, okay, all in favor, Woody Chitik eye?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Well, against an eye.
Lee Darst side.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Great. So we're now going to move to number two, um, which is twenty parking way. Um, again, to extend an existing deck, another relief is necessary. Uh, filed by Heidi Condon of H C Design on behalf of Dr. Roger Pompio. So um, is Heidi or one of her associates available? I guess, you know.
Yes, Heidi is here. My Zoom was frozen and I couldn't do anything. For a second, hold on. Have offered to promote her.
Did we? Circle back if this is.
Got her. Good evening.
Aye.
It was hard to get through. Um. This is a project at twenty parking way. It's a a building Dr. Roger Pompio built several years ago in twenty oh nine. Um, what he'd like to do is add a six foot by twenty-six foot four um, deck. And it's in the setbacks, if you can see um, on on the drawings that we provided. The the goal here is that it's it's covering.
Why don't you reference Heidi, help us, uh, which you you submitted uh. Free rocks in the site plan, which one are you?
Yeah, you you should have a site plan A one dash one. And this and the A one dash two should show you that the deck plan, the deck elevation and the volume.
I've got an A B. I've got an A one two.
Um, the A, the A B, yeah, the A B is the asbill from, yeah, Kavanaugh Consulting. And that is from twenty ten.
Yeah, yeah.
And you should see on the second drawings that you noted should have our site. Our footprint that shows the new deck at the six feet by twenty-six foot four in plan. You have that and and you should also have the elevations of the deck with the volume calculation.
Yeah, what we don't have is it is the west side elevation per se. We've got the uh, drawings that deal with a. A south and north elevation of uh, the deck.
And there's and then there's a front one right above it. It should be above it. I don't know if you can see that.
New called new deck?
Yes, the new, so on one side. You can see that the the deck is approximately, you know, will be just under six feet. And then and then it slopes, so it's slightly slightly over six feet, so you have the access panel and the 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 apron. Can you see that, the north elevation you you discussed?
I I see uh, existing building north elevation, two inch to rail and thirty-six.
Exactly, so that is showing our digs from the existing building over, that is showing the deck. So so the deck will be at the same, the new deck is at the same level as the existing covered deck. And so on on the one side, that's close to kind of where the old shoe, um, the one story shoe. Um, repair and repair places. You know, kind of.
Yeah.
At the top, that's where it will be. Um, six feet, two and a half inches for the top of the actual railing. But the deck itself is at the existing height, that's thirty-eight inches off the grade in that corner.
Sloping down to twenty-two inches.
Exactly, yes.
I I'm just curious why you didn't give us up. Is is the new entrance or the president, I was a little confused. Um, the west el- the west side, the west elevation?
We're we're not changing the the entrance to the existing deck at all. That this entire addition is just coming off the existing deck.
And it's not, it doesn't have an entrance to it.
No, you 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 get up onto the existing deck and then you just walk into it. So so there is an existing deck, you can see, if you look at your A B plan. That that Kavanaugh Consulting did, he calls it existing porch. That is to remain. All we're doing is adding to that existing porch, a six foot by twenty-six foot four inch. Deck that will be open air. It's at the same level. It's basically in the middle of that current covered porch. And it's a space that Dr. Pompio would like for his patients as they're waiting for himself. His concern is with his older patients after two, three years of COVID, they're not comfortable in a waiting room. So his goal here was just to provide an open deck, an open air off an existing porch. So all I'm doing is extending the height of that existing porch in the middle of what is now a a garden space.
So is this? Is this the porch that faces parking way or?
Yes, exactly. It faces parking way.
Okay. Can you just? Can you tell me what buildings you use to calculate the front setback?
Um, we worked with with John Helen and this these are the setbacks that he. Proposed for us to use. It, John, is that something you can? Kind of talk about? Cause what.
I'm sorry, I heard part of the question, but.
When 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 we met, this is now months ago, um, you and I talked about the setbacks with Dr. Pompio. And and we felt that six point two five setback off parking way was was a. A relevant setback that's already a long parking way in the buildings that are there.
I mean, there are some other buildings on parking way that are close. The we don't have the averages of those buildings. I think the other one would, you know, we. That backside line in or and next building would be the drop. On the back side there.
I I know where I got confused. Heidi, you you said that the the front of the building is on James Lane.
So.
Is that right? Is that what you said or I'm mistaken?
Um, that that is what Kavanaugh Consulting told us when I I discussed it with them, that they considered that the front.
Well, if they did, the the application shows the front setback going from fourteen feet down to eight. That would seem to be the west side setback. But I don't know what's front and what's side because.
I I think they were telling us that it's basically a corner lot. But they considered the front front being for the full setback to be along James Lane. But they.
But the setback is not changing on James Lane, is it?
No, and I'm not getting any closer to to James Lane. I'm getting closer to parking way.
Right, but your application says that you're getting closer to James Lane.
Then then sorry, that's our fault. We made that. We're really getting closer. I think the confusion was between Kavanaugh turning into Merrill and getting. The two front setbacks. But we were told it's a corner lot. We're not, to clarify, we're not touching or getting any closer to James Lane or way. We're getting closer towards parking way.
Right, but right now, it it well. I'm confused in terms of what your present front setback is. And what's the side setback? You you listed side setbacks, number one is ten feet. Required and number two, ten feet required, and both of them are marginally exceeded, I mean minisculely. And that is the front setback that's uh, shrinking. You're going from conforming to non-conforming.
I'll I'll have to double check with with Merrill because that was a number that we discussed with them and and I would have to double check how how they got that number. Cause that that was the number we were given.
I I don't, I don't think we could proceed very far with uh, um, an inconsistency between the application and. Drawings. They don't match up.
So I think I think I need to get a little bit more information then from Merrill slash Kavanaugh, cause that that's where we.
Yeah, I mean, if I I'm gonna make an assumption, but it's probably a bad one. No, it's not a bad one. I'm gonna make an assumption that you're not increasing, you're not going from a conforming setback of some sort to a non-conforming. But you may be, and I think we need to know that.
If if, so one question is, is this a corner lot? And this is something that I I haven't gotten a really clear answer, and if it's a corner lot and I have two front yard setbacks. Then the part of the building that is facing parking way is non-conforming. Cause the current is that is fif- thirteen point five from that property line. And that you can see on A B. Does that make sense?
Doesn't. Yeah, but it doesn't match the application. Thirteen point five and A B to parking way, you're saying?
Yes, so the the discussion we were trying to have, and I haven't really gotten a clear answer, and and maybe. You can help. Is A, is this a corner lot? And is it a corner lot, then right now what faces James Lane is conforming? But right now what's facing parking way is not conforming. What was built in twenty ten?
I think if one of side of your building goes on to a a parking lot and the other goes on to a way. The the part that goes on to the way should be the front, but I I mean. You know, one of the problems, one of the problems Heidi is if you look at a drawing X one, E X one one. Um, it's got the building, but it doesn't have any of the dimension, it doesn't have any of the 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 lot lines. Um, and again, I I we would need to see that E X one dash one uh, with the lot lines. And if it's relevant, as John was kind of alluding to, any any buildings, at least on this. Side that are within, what is it, John, two hundred feet or what am I um? It's it's, we do expect to see other buildings, but I don't see any lot lines here, so it's really hard to figure out.
I'm I'm not sure which one you're looking at because.
E X one dash one. Existing footprint.
Oh, okay. I mean, we were going off Kavanaugh Consulting's original site plan, but it sounds like, would you like that updated so it shows all of the neighboring buildings?
Even if you didn't do that, you've gotta, if you're gonna show us a building, you've gotta show us where it's situated on its lot. The existing, the before.
And that's A B, A, the the drawing A B has not changed, that's the existing conditions.
Well, then what is the purpose of this E X one dash one plan?
I think it's just showing what we drew as the existing footprint because it's changed slightly from what was originally proposed, but it didn't change the the setbacks. So the as built of the actual building is slightly different than what was proposed, but nothing that is making it in increased nonconformity. So so we are we are saying A B are the existing, it's the existing footprint and it shows all the setbacks, you're correct, it doesn't show the neighboring buildings and that's something we can ask Merrill to add for us.
It also doesn't label the streets and i- if it's a corner lot, what's it on the corner of?
Well, according to Kavanaugh Consulting, James Way and Parking Way is what they consider the corner lot. But they gave us the average of that of the setback that we are showing. Which is the six point two five. But it sounds like I need one drawing from them that will clarify what that is.
Yeah, here's, sorry, go ahead, Dave.
They, if your required front setback is six point two five, then you know, you're not really have much of a problem because you're gonna be conforming. But the way you get a required setback of six point two five is by averaging the two adjacent buildings if they're within the right space, but it doesn't show those buildings, we don't know what, how they're calculating it. The the plot plan, the site plan doesn't label the streets. Um, I, it's not even clear from the up in the corner of the locus, it's not even clear that there is a parking way. It shows James Lane and it shows a parking lot.
The parking lot's not a way. But but also, I guess to Dave's point, i- if you if you look at this uh the western side, where on this Kavanaugh plan, the deck comes, the existing porch is thirteen and a half feet from the lot line and your new deck is going to be eight feet, so you're.
Uh, the new deck is six, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's six feet, so you're now eight foot setback as opposed to thirteen and a half.
Yes.
And the side setback, it looks like it's the present porch conforms and the new deck does not. But I'm not sure that this form was filled out correctly. But I mean, that's the way I would read the form and and I may be confusing everybody else, but I think you're might be creating a nonconformity.
I think there's either. It seems to me from your application that your project is conforming on a conforming, already conforming structure. So I don't know that you need a special permit, but that would only be true if the front setback is an actual front setback and if it's calculated at six point two five properly. Because it was six point two five, if it's a, if it's the required front setback under our zoning by law and you're going to an eight foot setback, then you're not having any nonconforming issues. But I just can't, from from the paperwork that we have, it's impossible to tell what the front setback is, whether it's a corner lot, how how it's calculated, all those things.
I don't see anything in John Kavanaugh's plan that uh uses the statistic six point two five.
It's up in.
I think that's what I need to get them to clarify, so I think I need one clear site plan that is updated.
Oh, I see, up in that corner legend there.
Yeah, that's that's the only thing I have. But I can certainly ask them to to clarify this, showing the existing structures that are neighboring the property.
This is why we, our requirement is in fact that um site plans uh include neighboring properties if they're within so many feet, hundred, couple hundred feet. Because I don't know where they got the nine point two and the three point five feet of neighboring, I can't think of a neighboring structure, well, it could be that shoe store or whatever you say, the.
Yeah.
Handyman, whatever, uh, could be, but I don't see it and I don't know how far away it is and I don't know.
It sounds like if if I can request a continuation and I will get a very clear site plan from Merrill showing the neighboring buildings and and the setbacks with a clear explanation from them how they got to that six point two five.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a, I mean, it's not a bad project, but it's the the numbers start to jump around a little bit and.
No, I I understand.
Question marks.
Yeah, we we were trying to keep it simple, um, but we clearly don't have enough information on the site plan to to justify the numbers that we have.
Okay, and I would, and when you do that, um, I would urge you to put the lot lines in on E X one, the existing. Even though you have Kavanaugh's site plan.
Okay.
The existing footprint should be shown relative to its lot lines. It's an easier plan to read than, you know, it's it's a a larger scale.
Sure.
But but at any rate, at any rate, there is you know, there were, there were front and back and north and south and and it's a little hard to track which which was which.
Well, I think if I get one updated site plan, it's me much easier for all of us to follow what what the.
But also do me a favor and take a look at your own application page two.
Okay.
If you need advice, you're certainly free to go to John or somebody else, but I'm not sure that these numbers square with Kavanaugh's plan or what you're doing. Uh, square precisely.
All right, we'll double check our north, south, east and west.
Yeah, so it sort of created a sort of question mark as to does this conform or doesn't it and so on and so forth.
Sure.
As they say, it's not a it's not a problem with the project as much as, I mean, unless you're creating a nonconformity.
Okay. We'll we'll get that site plan, so I think that will answer the questions and make it very clear.
Yeah. Or do you have other uh suggestions for Heidi in terms of, I mean, we'll move to continue this until June sixth, but I mean, are there other anomalies or anything that you'd like to? Anybody?
No, I'm I'm still a little um confused about what the other way, about parking way.
Yeah, um. Yeah, is 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 a is a parking lot. Well, I'm not even sure. I don't know, um. I can look up, I don't I don't know if I want to take the time now, but to see if this was an accepted way, I doubt it, I mean, I think it's a parking lot. And and of course, any parking lot of that size, you have to have a ingress and egress and that doesn't make it away from a standpoint of uh um setbacks or.
So so that's something Merrill can clarify for us then.
Yeah. And if they believe that parking way is a way and gives you is the front, I'd like to to understand how they um kind of came to that conclusion, that's all.
Okay.
Because it says frontage, the length of line dividing a lot from the right of way of the street on which it bounds. This is to be measured the right of way boundary and not at the center line of the street, but that's, they're all talking about street, I mean, every time you hear front, it's street. And and whether parking way qualifies as a street is questionable, but my, I don't know, I haven't looked it up.
I'll I'll ask them for clarification.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So board, would you agree that we should continue this hearing until June sixth? And if so, I'd make such a motion.
Seconded.
Okay, move and seconded all in favor, would you chit a guy?
Dave McMorris today.
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, move, okay, we'll see you Heidi on June sixth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye bye.
Bye bye, um, the next three hearings are linked, uh, all filed by the same applicant, K D Custom Builders. Uh, for three lots on ninety four Black Horse Lane, they've requested a continuance until June, is that right, Cassandra, I saw?
Yes, that's correct.
A letter dated today, I think, wasn't it, or yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, from Adam Brodsky, so unless the board wishes to I don't know, deal with the deal with this one now, I would, I would recommend that we uh accept the applicant's request to continue this until June. So anybody object, otherwise I'll make a motion and we'll we have to probably continue each of the three appeals, even though we've merged the presentations. I think they're separate appeals, so we have to vote on each, continuing each of these three uh appeals.
So that's a good idea, just in case.
Just to be safe, yeah, so I would make a motion to continue the appeal of the building inspector's decision uh on ninety four Black Horse Lane Lot A, that's now been um we have said, we have a second from Matt, all in favor, would you chit a guy?
Dave McMorris, I.
Everybody else, Charlie?
Charlie Higgins, an eye.
Yeah, okay.
Michael Dickey, I.
Mike, great. Appreciate it, um, the next um decision is that I make a motion to continue uh the appeal of the building inspector's decision at ninety four Black Horse Lane Lot D. So I've made that motion, is it seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, move and seconded all in favor, would you chit a guy?
Charlie Higgins, an eye.
Lee Darcey.
Yeah.
Alrighty, and the third uh appeal, I'll make a motion to continue it is appeal the building inspector's decision at ninety four Black Horse Lane Lot D. Um, so that motion's been made, is it seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, would you chit a guy?
Dave McMorris, I.
Charlie Higgins, an eye.
Lee Darcey.
Michael Dickey, I.
Okay. So now we'll move. We're we're a little ahead of the schedule, Cassandra, but still, um. Uh, we now move to sixty three Nichols Road LLC to reinforce a damaged retaining wall with a new wall in the floodplain. Uh, is there anyone here representing representing the uh applicant?
Yes, I'm pulling Carmen forward.
Okay. So let's promote Carmen.
Good evening. Promoted.
All right, you're now the boss.
It's nice to see you again.
Promotion, sorry.
Um, so Carmen Hudson from Merrill Engineers and Land Surveyors, um. I am representing tonight the owners of the property at sixty three Nichols Road, uh sixty three Nichols Road LLC. What, uh, the project consists of, and actually it's almost done because it was done as an uh emergency situation, uh, it received an emergency certification from conservation, John Helen was also there. Uh, during one of the storms, uh, we had this portion of, and I'm sorry. I think I'm talking and I am not sharing my screen, or am I? I am so sorry, let me share my screen, sharing is scary, okay, there we go. So uh, this is the site plan that you have in front of you. Uh, this uh property has, Nichols Road is way down here at the bottom of the page, it's a very long driveway uh that goes uh right next to Little Harbor and on the on the uh north side of the driveway, there is uh salt marsh and wetland. And this is the the only means of vehicular access to the property. Uh, during one of our storms about uh maybe a month and a half ago, a couple of months ago, uh, this portion of the wall collapsed. This was an existing, uh, it was actually a landscape wall and you can see this in this in this pictures right here, so they used landscape wall materials for this and it was in a wet environment uh with also um water pressures, you know, and during a storm, it just couldn't take it, um. I'm actually amazed that it lasted this long, so this portion of the wall uh collapsed. And when uh John Helen went to visit the the site, he also noticed as well as and as us, that the remaining portion of the wall was in risk of collapsing. So we received the emergency certification to uh construct the wall, to reconstruct it and what this wall is, is really in the areas that it was collapsed, it was just built and it was built of this um this modular blocks that are filled with stone. So the the blocks are four feet in width and they were placed right in front of the the collab, the the existing damaged wall and where it was collapsed over the area where it was collapsed. Um, so what this effectively we did was it increased the footprint of this causeway by four feet because of the the width of the or the depth of this this blocks. This uh driveway is almost entirely within the floodplain. Uh, you can see this black dash line up here, that is uh a limit of this of the floodplain, everything down from there is within the floodplain up to this location. So we were increasing the footprint of, you know, the the causeway by four feet within the floodplain. However, this is an existing use and an existing structure in the floodplain. Also, I wanted to point out that uh this is the building setback and this portion of uh the wall that collapsed that we rebuilt with this four foot blocks is within the big building setbacks and it was higher than three feet in height. However, once again, it was an existing condition, um. We thought that we needed relief under uh section eight seven uh for uh an increase of an in in existing nonconformity and an existing nonconforming use and structure. Um, but also there is that section in uh in the floodplain section, section nine, that allows the construction of a driveway in uh in the floodplain. Um, however, we thought that this was primarily uh something that needed zoning relief under section eight for nonconforming structures and uses. Um, so that was really the gist of it, the majority of this wall has already been constructed because it was done under under an emergency situation from why I understand, only this section of the wall hasn't been constructed yet. Um, I I looked in the zoning by law, trying to see if I found something that would allow this as an emergency situation, I didn't I didn't see it, but if you if 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 you know of something that would allow this as I, you know, as an emergency situation, that would be great to know, uh, otherwise I would uh love to answer any questions at this point.
Okay, and the wall itself uh that collapsed, Merrill said it's it's over ten years old, they don't know how old, but no, it's probably.
Yes, so. Yes, um, and um the the causeway itself is dates back to nineteen thirty eight. But uh this wall, we we don't, it it wasn't back, it wasn't there in nineteen thirty eight, but it was definitely over ten years old.
Yeah, and they also go on to say, and not putting words in your mouth, that if a structure has been in existence without appeals for a period of ten years, then it's considered uh for zoning as a legally nonconforming structure, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're on safe ground there. Um, do you have a point of view as to why you think it's eight point seven that you need relief from as opposed to nine point seven F?
Well, just because the, so the they use as a, the use of a driveway in, you know, in the floodplain is allowed under a special permit. And I could not find any filings uh at all in the in the record for this, so therefore this is an existing nonconforming use. Um, so since we are uh extending it or altering it, I thought that it was covered under section eight seven.
Yeah, I don't think the nine seven F, I mean, it gives. F, I mean, it gives you the right to build the driveway, but it doesn't necessarily give you the right to build the structure next to the driveway.
Exactly, so I, I, I really thought. Thank you, David.
Yeah, I mean, this, well, whether the bylaw allows or doesn't allow in an emergency situation. The Conservation Commission and Building Commissioner felt that an emergency existed and that something needed to be done, and I. From the looks of it, I can understand why, even though some of it's been reconstructed, but.
I think if we found something that was offensive to the standards of a special permit, we can make them change it, or take some of it down, but. I don't see that as an issue in this case.
I don't either, I mean, it's, it's a pretty sense, fragile, let me put it this way, the causeway is. Potentially very fragile to, to title actions and things, and I can see a. You know, a particular storm, easterly storm or something coming and wiping this. You know, section out, so I, I. I didn't have any problem with what they're proposing, let me put it that way. But I don't know, if John's still on the line, I hope he is. Do you have any issues with what they're proposing from a, from a construction standpoint, from a survivability or? Protections?
No, a- a- again, the, we're looking at your plans, the lower part, we able them to rebuild under the Emergency Act. One to prevent any further damage or erosion to the wetlands, and. Cause they, you know, the next thing was going to be the god rail and then, then the road that was going to collapse. The portion that they haven't worked on yet, up, up on the upper left-hand corner of the plan. There is the. I, there are quite erosion to place and washout into the, into the wetlands. Suggested that they come to the zoning board of appeals to, to ask for permission to extend the stone wall. Retain while they had to prevent any further damage or washout in, into the, into the wetlands.
Is the Conservation Commission, or has it, or is it likely to insist on some mitigation measures or? Or removal of, of some of the stone, and if, if there was mortar there, that's.
We actually have received Conservation Commission approval on Thursday. Unfortunately, the order of conditions is not available yet, but the plan was approved.
Okay, I'm not shocked by any means, but I.
And as well as the conservation agent. The Conservation Agent was involved in the, the emergency issuance and aware of, of the project.
Cause there's a lot of stuff that's fallen down into the marsh, I mean, that's not our. Concerns, Conservation Commission's concern, but there's, you know, lots of debris.
Yeah, that, that has been removed also and, and cleaned up.
Okay.
This is kind of one of those rare cases where we don't have to worry about. What it might look like, because we know what it looks like, or at least the neighbors do, so.
Probably never see it.
Well, I just.
How does that one house?
Curious if there has been any response from any of the neighbors about what's been built, what will be built.
No, I, I have not heard anything through the ZBA filing, you know. I submitted this, I think it was almost concurrently with the notice of intent. And I have not heard anything, once again, I was present for the hearing on Thursday with the Conservation Commission. And there were no butters at that point, nobody spoke against the project. But just out of curiosity, I just wanted to know for, this is actually the first emergency certification that I had. Is there anything in the bylaw that would allow this to take place? Without having to file for a special permit if it's in an emergency situation?
Over to you, John.
The emergency situation, you, you know, in the building code, you are allowed to do this, and they did. Contact me before they got too far along, and we did review it, so there the, I think the. Mostly what you're in front of the board for now is the, almost. The extension portion of it, and there, which is not under the emergency portion of it.
Okay, so that little piece, okay.
Okay. The board, what, what are, what are some of your takeaways on this one, I'm asking the board?
Carmen, did you say, I heard you say that there were no butters at the Conservation Commission meeting, was there? Did, have they? Given like an order of conditions, or is there, or how, how were things left at that meeting?
So they closed the, the hearing, they issued, so. When they close the hearing, they vote on issuing an order of conditions. However, the physical order of conditions has to be drafted, and when the agent. Sends us the order of conditions, so when she, when she mails it, or when we go pick it up. Then the order of conditions is considered issued, however, she hasn't drafted the order of conditions yet, so we cannot, I, I could. I normally try to give you a copy of the order of conditions when available, but unfortunately, it's not available just yet. But the vote has taken place already on Thursday to approve the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Matt, just to follow up, we do have a, a verbal from the agent, she is out of town for a few days, and I, I know. It's on our list of things to complete when she gets back, so we have, we have touch base. As, as this project has been ongoing, and the order of conditions was, was pretty generic, I, I think. Most of the conditions that they. Put on the map, most of it was already done, so they followed those procedures, so I, I think that. Back in town.
Okay, great.
How about others?
Referring to it as an emergency certification, was that emergency certification just? For our documentation purposes, I guess, is that something that's issued from you or from Conservation?
That was. Conservation, I, I did issue a, a bill for the structure. To go along with their emergency certification, so the, the engineer was able to submit. You know, plans of what he was doing, how he was doing it, what they were using for fill, and then we issued the permit based on that for that, for that area. And then, you know, again, that's when we agreed to that, you know, the emergency didn't extend to the upper portion, and that they, they need. Relief of the floodplain for that, and to come back through the normal channels.
Oh, okay, okay. Mike Dickey, you got anything, or Lee, or Charlie?
I, I'm not sure if I missed it, was there ever a permit for the original retaining wall?
I don't believe there was a building permit for the original retaining wall, it might just have been done under a conservation or the chapter ninety-one. But again, I looked in the records and did not see it, a, a building permit originally taken.
Okay, thank you.
I looked at it, it looked like a very impressive operation, I had one question, what is a gravity wall?
So it, it, this, this wall is a gravity wall because it's all the weight of the stone. That is placed inside this four foot blocks that is keeping it down. So it's a very heavy wall that is filled with stone, very, very deep, it's four feet in, in depth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Dickey?
Um, I don't have any questions, I, I, again, I, I think it's relatively straightforward.
Yeah, that's, that would be my take, I guess. So I would make a, I mean, unless we have other questions, is there anybody, Cassandra in the audience who wishes to be promoted?
Uh, I don't believe so, nobody's raising their hand, and there's no one in the Q and A.
Okay, well, then I would make a motion to continue this until June sixth. At which time we will not only have a draft decision, but also have, be the beneficiary of the order of conditions from CONCOM. But un- unless there's some, something that nobody's anticipating, it sounds like this will be. Not really sort of influenced the finding under eight seven B. Which is, that it's not significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood, in fact, it's. Probably, probably very beneficial in terms of the natural environment, as well as the practical side of things, and. If this causeway ceases to exist, so does access, which nobody would want to see. So I'd make a motion to continue this, subject, you know, not subject to, but presuming that we will get. A conservation order of con- conditions that we can incorporate, and I'll leave it up to the drafter. I don't know, Dave, how you feel, should this be entirely an eight seven B? Ignoring nine seven F, or should we incorporate both? Both sections and, and a finding under each?
I would say probably both sections, I mean, the driveway, it is. Kind of an essential part of the driveway.
Yeah.
It's not the actual driveway itself, so I think just to cover everything, they may as well include both.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion to continue this until June sixth.
Second.
Moving seconded, what do you choose a guy?
Dave McMorrissey.
Charlie Higgins and I.
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey, I.
Matt Watkins, I.
Okay, moved and, all right, so that's moved, so we have one more hearing, and again.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome Carmen, thank you. This one is well advanced over the published timetable. I know they're warned to sort of stand by, but this is an appeal filed by Barbara and Kevin Wren. Requesting a zoning enforcement of forty-six Black Rock Road because of. Kind of unsightly equipment and, and other things on this, on the neighboring property. Are they available?
Uh, the attorney. Who helped to file the application is here, he's coming forward.
Okay, great.
And the applicant themselves are here.
Okay, good. I'll let them get organized. Okay, so we have Attorney Mitchell and Barbara Wren, the applicant or appellant, I should say. There may be. Well, we'll get to it, there may be sort of two different perspectives in this, but. Why don't you, you're bringing the appeal, Attorney Mitchell, why don't you lead off? And, and help us a little bit with the timeline, because I have today a, a letter that goes back almost a month and a half from. John Helen, who's, says that there are no zoning violations in the property, that these have all been addressed. But why don't you take us to where, not so much what might have been three months ago, but where we stand today? How much of this property has been, in your estimation, improved according to the bylaw and? And, and not, and we'll hear from John Helen and. Other interested parties, but maybe you could give us the context.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matt Mitchell, Orenberger, DeLisi and Harris, on behalf of the appellants, Barbara and Kevin Wren. I think some recent photographs that were taken on April twenty-second have been circulated. To the board members, that is the current condition of the property.
Did you do some screen sharing?
I cannot, I do not have those up for you guys, I thought that those were being distributed, or am I mistaken?
No, they were distributed, but it would be helpful if we could follow along visually, follow your words visually. Cassandra, do we have those?
They were distributed to the board, I don't have the ability to screen share and also take the minutes.
Well, maybe, let me, let me do it this way, for the, the pictures that were sent in today, there were three. And do the board members have, have copies of those?
But we can't call them up, I, I can't. I have to exit.
I don't see them.
I don't think we received them today.
We don't have any from today, we have some. That were in our packets that we retrieved last week.
But they were in black and white and almost impossible to read.
I did not receive any photos today as any sort of submission.
So the photographs are attached to the original appeal, Mr. Chairman, are those not clear?
I'm looking at the original appeal, they're, they're clear enough, why don't you, why don't you start here, and I don't know. Your photographs that you say you sent today. I think I might have seen them, but then, these are not they.
No, they're, they're not, and I believe, actually, Mr. Chairman, you did respond to me that you did receive them.
Yeah, and I, I'd ask Cassandra to circulate them to the board.
I had circulated the ones from the twenty-eighth. I didn't receive any today.
Are these different from the twenty-eighth?
They look, the, the conditions are, are pretty much the same, the same. Vehicles and truck beds and so on are still existing on the property at this point in time, so. If you go to the packet that I submitted. On the, on the first photograph that's shown there, that white truck bed is still. In that position on the property line with the Wrens, it has a little bit more C and D waste in it now than it has. In this particular picture, the, the truck that you see on the right-hand side. Is actually more clearly shown on the third page. You can see it's disassembled, it has no headlights, no front bumper, there's a tarp over the top of it, and it looks to me the way the tarp is hanging. There's actually no windshield, I would assume that the tarp is there to prevent water from getting into the cab. That does not look operable to me. There's also a, a tarp on the right-hand side, to the right of that truck that you'll see, and I'm not sure what's under that. If, if you go to the second photograph, there's a blue truck bed and a white truck bed, those. Again, still exist on the property, they're right on the property line of my client's property. And there are als, there's also. At this point in time, the photographs that I distributed today, there's also a lawn tractor that is parked. Right next to the blue truck bed on the property line, and that I will represent to you is. Rusted and very dilapidated and does not look to be in an operational condition. So, this, I, I guess I'll back up, this, number one. I have the most utmost respect for Mr. Helen, as does Bill Orenberger, as does Jeff DeLisi. This is just a situation where we just don't agree, he was kind enough to reach out to me when the request was filed. We had a discussion, just couldn't come to an agreement, and here we are. And I'd also like to say that this appeal is not some sort of vendetta against the Harrisons by the Wrens. This has been an ongoing situation, and it looks to me from. The letter of the bylaw is where, as well as the intent of the bylaw, that. These vehicles, half vehicles, lawn tractors, C and D. Don't appear to be in the spirit of the bylaw concerning residential properties and storage on residential properties. So, these conditions exist, my clients would like the truck and the truck beds and the lawn tractor removed from the property. They are again right on the property line with my client's property. Um, and that's the relief that they're seeking today.
And uh you you received back a month and a half ago on March twenty second or thereabouts a. A letter from John Hallen, correct?
I did. I did.
Made six or or a timeline, the six points. Um, one of which the implication, pretty strong implication is that what's on the property or what's going, what's remaining on the property. Are um both vehicles and and materials uh. Um, involved with the construction of this uh garage extension or shed.
Well, the the I guess my response to that would be that the that the truck that's still there. Um, even though it may have been registered, certainly wouldn't pass inspection. That that is still there and how that would possibly. Um, be assisting in any way of the construction. Of uh the addition in the garage that the Harrisons are are doing right now, I. I don't see it in terms of the truck beds. Um, the picture I have from last week, and again, I'll represent this uh to the board. Has what looks like cut um plywood and a couple of two by fours in it, um but nothing else. The blue truck bed is covered with a large piece of plywood. Um, so you can't see what's in it. And then the lawn tractor obviously is is not part of any sort of construction process, so. I mean, at least in terms of that, I understand that that Mr. Harrison told Mr. Hallen that these um were being used to store. Uh, materials for the construction, but the but the pictures don't seem to reflect that. And in terms of um the letter from Mr. Hallen, while I appreciated it. I mean, we're we're here today because the fourteen day fourteen day deadline wasn't met. Um, and at the time that that letter was set, just for procedural purposes, there was no. Request for zoning enforcement, at least in front of him. The appeal had already been taken.
Mm hmm.
So that's, I mean, that's where we are at this point in time. The the conditions are are similar or almost the same as what the pictures show you. And again, um, under the provision of the bylaw. Um, that's cited in the appeal. It it looks to me like, you know, they're in violation of the bylaw and.
I don't know, why don't you take a a minute or two and read us what the. The the actual wording of the of that section of the bylaw, okay?
Okay, it's.
I think it's important that we. You know, make a differentiation if if that's if if we decide to do so between construction. Uh, and uh storage of. Other. Both vehicles and materials.
Uh, understood. Uh, it's section three hundred dash four point three C. And it says, open display or open storage of junk shall be prohibited in all districts. Including but not limited to unregistered automobiles, worn out, cast off or discarded articles or materials. That are ready for destruction or have been stored or collected for salvage. Or conversion into some other use. And certainly, it's our position that that what we have here. Is open display and open storage of junk. And and and, you know, the I think Mr. Helen indicated that the that the trucks been registered in Vermont, but. As you can see from the pictures, it certainly wouldn't pass inspection. It's pretty disassembled and worn out. Um, as is the lawn tractor, which I'll represent to you is is sitting right next to uh the blue truck bed. So in terms of these things being some part of the construction project going on right now, I just. I don't see it. My clients don't see it.
Okay, board, how about we'll we can loop back and forth, but I'd like. You know, open it up to the board to ask questions first of Attorney Mitchell, and then we can hear from John Hallen.
So what do you want thing uh? If if we wanted, I could uh, it looks like on our town website, the filing has um. Color photos which represent a little better than what we had in our packets.
Exactly.
I could share my screen if we if we determine that that's appropriate, but um. Yeah, I think my only question would be, so your your letter, uh Attorney Mitchell, where you were asking for. Um, enforcement. Was, it says it was sent electronically and certified. Mail on the fourteenth of February and then.
It was it was also, it was also um again delivered, I believe.
Okay.
And and since, you know, the the law, by the way, this is just certain aside, has. Has shifted a bit, at least uh with town council. Um, before it was that uh one had fourteen days to. Uh, appeal a decision of the building inspector and a non-decision. Um, functioned as a denial. Uh, that's since there've been two significant court cases that have overruled that. Instead, uh, in the absence of a of a decision, a written decision, not verbal, written decision. Um, the clock keeps running in terms of um allowing an appeal. So there is no. The only thing that triggers off an appeal period is a written decision from the building inspector. So um I think there they they made it um. On that basis, and and that's. Come up with town council in another situation. But, okay, so we have colored photos. Um, what about other board members?
Um, I went out last Friday and um. Uh, happened to go by there. It's not too far from my house. I was walking my dog and I met the homeowners outside and they took me. On a tour of their backyard and showed me all their building and um explained to me about the trucks and the. And the different things that they were gonna do um.
Which homeowners are we talking about?
The ha- um, the. Harrisons.
Okay, okay, not not the neighbor.
Not the Rens.
Rens, okay.
They they do have a very close living situation, dri- driveway, close to where the building is. Um, and um the Rens have. They live. Right next door to the Harrisons, but their property also. Go runs, there's this piece that runs around along the back of the Harrison's property, so. Not only are they neighbors to one side, they have a um a strip of land, which I actually don't know how. Wide it is that runs along the back of the Harrison's property and separates them from spindrift. Which is off of forest, so black horse to there. So anyway. I walked the land and um. And spoke to the Harrisons and they showed me all their renovations and they told me that the. The truck, the offending truck was going to get put back together and painted within a very short period of time. Um, and I believe that they have moved most of the property. Off of the lot line. However, there are no fences, so there is no real place to shield. Um. The bikes and construction and their whole backyard is under construction with the proposed garage and the. The current garage, which there's a picture of, they built the. What Harrisons had built a shed off the back, which they got a permit for. To use to store during the time they were taking, they were starting the other garage. The old garage in the picture is coming down because they're putting in a stormwater drainage um. In that, and they said that that's coming down very soon, and maybe John Hallen would know. When they're taking down the old garage because they have to put a stormwater drainage system. In that exact spot with the old garages. So then they will be constructing the new garage and they are well aware that. Um, and I'm sure that their attorney, who I see is in the Q and A. Uh, and I had seen that the um Harrisons were gonna be on. Anyway, um, they walked me around, showed me everything um. And told me what their plans were. So.
Okay. Other board members have at this point uh questions of Attorney Mitchell or?
There any historical evidence of how long this stuff has been there?
I defer to my client on that one. Barbara?
Um, it's been there quite a while, but since the construction, it's been moved to our property line and. You know, we do own behind the Harrisons and I I garden back there and pretty much the whole rear property line is. Uh, covered with the cast off truck beds and other things that are under tarps. Um, so a while, but only recently moved to the property line.
How would you define a while?
Um, gosh, uh. You know, I.
You don't have to be accurate. I mean, I don't I don't know whether you're talking about a month or two years.
No, I probably uh. I maybe a year, a year and a half, but you know, I don't know. Couldn't see the stuff until it was, you know, moved right on the property line. Um. And, you know, it's not really appropriate for a residential neighborhood. It looks more like a. You know, um, auto body shop. And we are very, our homes are very close. Their driveway, you know, the property line runs down the middle of their driveway, so. Um, you know, it's it's really quite an eyesore.
The other.
Yeah, yeah, um, and maybe this is a question better answered by the Harrisons, but. Is that is the plan that these beat up old trucks are going to be stored in the garage that's being built? And if not, what's the fate of the beat up trucks?
Why don't we save that for the Harrisons? It's a great question. Because of the beat up trucks are. Visible, uh, the garage isn't gonna be. Uh, of any benefit for the from a visual standpoint. Anybody else? Uh. I think we should hear from. I I don't know, what's Dave, what would you suggest? We could either hear from the Harrisons or from John. I mean, I think John, obviously, to be. He's essential to this. It's an appeal against his. I'd like to hear from John. I would try, give us, give us your your take on this. I mean, you would have to agree that. Uh, the open display of of items now is not very appealing. Uh, the question is, are they both necessary for construction and is it temporary?
Yeah, I I think the um. Yeah, there is a, I I think there's probably three items in question. Uh, one would be the the truck, the uh. Uh, the antique truck without the bed, uh, but the bed has been removed. I think that the the. Uh, they indicated they're. Soon to be sending it off to be painted and worked on. So there was a car's bed uh there. Currently, it is registered and and has been, from what I understand, and has a a plate on it. Uh, the antique plate from Vermont, it is, uh, you know, registered and and plated. Uh, I know they did try to. Keep it as far away from the side yard as they could, the area where buttered the property, we had asked several times. I I have made. Several site visits up up there, um, there, and then the the third item would be the um. Uh, the other bed, which matches that, but is again, a a another bed, the intent. Just to is to house all this um. You know, equipment. Um, there, a- again, the same thing with the temporary structure. Uh, so it, again, the new garage is further. Uh, from the side lot line in there, so uh a- again. The existing garage will be torn down, so all this stuff will move inside and away from there. And again, the since the um foundation has been done in backfield, um. Uh, I haven't seen it backfield, but I assume it is now. It it was approved to be backfilled. Uh, they had said, uh, move the, you know, the temporary outhouse back further away from the the property as asked and uh. You know, uh, they intend to again cover. There and get the stuff inside the garage as soon as it's built, from my understanding, as well as the stuff that's um. Inside the existing garage now. The existing garage is probably a one bay garage. The new one is, I think it's either two or three, uh, so it's a quite a bit larger.
In your estimation, is the new garage. Sized so that it could accommodate all these uh vehicles inside?
Yes, I would uh say that.
Let's hear from the uh Harrisons and then. Come back to the app, to the appellant.
I'm going to pull forward um their attorney.
Sure.
Um, it looks like the Harrisons are also here.
Uh, good evening, uh. Uh, Chairman and the rest of the ZBA appreciate. You taking the time on this matter this evening. My name's Ben Timman and I represent. Tiffany and Paul Harrison, who you see in one of the Hollywood squares here, having been promoted as well. Um, I don't know if it's possible for for me to share my screen because there is an aspect of the um the site plan that was part of the building permit application, I think is relevant.
Right, well, I it was possible. You're the one who could tell me if it's possible. I mean. I'm sure we'd like to see it if if you can.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm, oh, good, I'm able to share the screen. Perfect. So I'm gonna. Pull up the um, the May twenty twenty two um. Site plan, let me shrink it a bit. Is that visible to the board?
A corner of it is. Yeah, now I guess it's coming into.
So this is the site plan that was um provided with the building permit application. It also um is in the Conservation Commission files because there is Conservation Commission approvals for this project as well. And this is a plan that um was provided to the Rens um some time ago. Too. So what I had blown up was the material stockpile area, which I think you can see in the northeast corner of um. Of the Harrisons property, um, the Rens being here to the east. And so the reason I want to point that out is that, and this goes to one of the three key findings. That uh Inspector Hallen made. Is that, you know, this is a construction project. As the board knows, it's a project that was uh properly permitted by a permit issued. In November of twenty twenty two. It's a small lot, um, but it's gone through all of the approvals and part of this particular plan is is shown here in the. On the uh site plan is a material stockpile area, and that's where some of this uh construction debris. Um, is is located and that that was to be expected. Now, the Parrisons. Have moved um a a a number of different things at the request of the Rens and. Um. And the building inspector as well, when um Mrs. Ren says, you know, that things are on her property line, you know, I just want to be clear that. Everything is on the Harrison's property, so there's no allegation that I'm aware of that anything has, you know, encroached upon. Uh, the Rens, the Rens property. Um, I would just point out too for the board that. As um as you indicated. Uh, Chairman Chittick, the fourteen day um period that. Um. That attorney. Mitchell uh uses as a basis for his appeal. Is, as you indicated, um, clearly not a mandatory period. That's the. Voges v Avery W Lowell Inc. decision out of, actually from nineteen eighty four. Uh, eighteen Mass App Court, four seventy one. At page four seventy nine. So for more, for almost forty years, it's been. The law in Massachusetts that the four, the fourteen day period is not mandatory. There is no constructive denial. Um, which which really seems to serve as the as the sole basis for this appeal. That decision says the failure of the building inspector to respond to. The plaintiff's request for zoning enforcement within the period of time in that case was of no legal consequence. So as far as that particular basis, um, it it isn't a basis um for for the appeal. But on the substance, respectfully, you know, the there the three issues, I think, have been. Fully addressed and obviously we are in full support of what the building inspector determined here after visiting the site. On multiple occasions and having multiple conversations with my clients. So those three issues were, number one, whether the white truck. Um, it is registered and and the. The bylaw provision that Attorney Mitchell referenced talks about unregistered automobiles. It doesn't talk about. Uninspected or is it, you know, does it uh, can it run? Um, it talks about, is it registered? It is registered as um Inspector Hallen has ve- has validated. And also, it it's a, it's a vintage truck that is under, you know, renovation. It does have a windshield, um, contrary to a comment earlier, but it's it's being restored. It's a vintage truck that's being restored. So that issue seems to have been satisfied because um Inspector Hallen has. Uh, verified that it that it is inspected. The second issue was um whether. The temporary garage extension that Paul Harrison erected as really a substitute for a pod. This is just a. The temporary garage extension that Paul Harrison erected as really a substitute for a pod. This is just a, a temporary. Shed trailer where he can place, um, you know, construction materials during this project. Whether that was properly permitted, um, on that one. Uh, Inspector Howland asked the Harrisons to go ahead and, and seek a temporary. Um, gra- uh, temporary permit for that. Structure, they did so and it's been issued. So that second issue seems to be resolved. And then the third issue is again on this issue of, um, of construction debris. And as Inspector Howland said in his March twenty-second letter. Um, the blue truck bed on Sawhorses. Uh, was being used according to, to Mr. Harrison who's here and can attest to this, but Mr. Inspector Howland attested to it as well. To store construction materials for the project. So again, this is in the stockpile area. And it's part of a construction project that's on its way to being completed. And, you know, frankly, we, we don't really see. Any substantive merit at all to this appeal. And as to the actual basis of the appeal, which was filed, I guess, just coincidentally was filed on the same date. March twenty-second. Citing a failure to respond within fourteen days as the date of Inspector Howland's. Response. I'm not sure if, if, if the Rens were. So concerned about the fourteen days, I'm not sure why they waited until March twenty-second to say, oh. There's no response within fourteen days. They happened on the same day. But that procedural argument also bears no, um, legal weight. So that's the position of the Rens, um. They're here and, and I think would like the opportunity if the board would allow to say a word or two, and then also they can answer. You know, any questions you have, including Mr. Dickey's question regarding what's the ultimate fate of the, uh, blue truck bed? So thank you very much.
Okay, let's, let's promote the Harrisons. And you, you've got the floor. But you're muted. There you go.
Yeah, so as. Uh, as Ben has just said, the, uh, the white truck is, it's, it's an antique truck. It's a restoration project. It's, uh, gonna have a spot in the garage. Once the garage is complete, it's one of the reasons why we're building the garage. Uh, and. We're utilizing the truck bed to store building materials. Um, it's a good spot to keep them up off the ground and keep them dry. Uh, so even though the truck bed is there, it's. It's in the construction. Stockpile area and we are using it to put. To stockpile construction materials and parts and materials that are pulled off the house and whatnot and new materials that we're bringing in, so.
There, there was also though, uh, I think when I went by, uh, uh, it was a, a kind of a yellow lawnmower or something that looked pretty. Inoperable. Am I right or?
Yes, that's, that's actually an antique. Uh, lawnmower as well, so. It's a, it's an antique tractor, actually, so, um.
I've got some of those, but they're, but I, I, I still believe they're, I'll get them to run, but I don't know. I wish you well on that one, but why don't you answer Mike Dickey's, uh, question? Mike, why don't you, uh, give us your. Perspective again, or, or your question rather.
Yeah, I, I, I guess, um, I, I think I said something along the lines of. You know, presumably, um, the garage is being built. To store something. Is it going to be, is the plan once it's complete, uh, to store all of the. The equipment and other accoutrements that are, that I, uh, that are now kind of. Placed around the, 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 the property and, and I guess the, the other question I'd like to know is. Um, you know, when was the construction on the garage started and. Is there a, uh, proposed finish date when presumably. Uh, there'll be, uh, some, some storage space for some of the stuff that's now in the yard?
Uh, yeah, okay, that's a good question, um. The garage is definitely big enough to be able to put these things away. It's a three-car garage and it has a workshop attached at the back. Um, so the, the three-car garage is for parking and then the workshop at the back is for working on projects. The truck would be one of the projects. The, the lawn tractor would be another project, um. So yes. Um, we've started on the garage and we plan to. Continue working on the garage until it is finished. Um, we've, we're looking to have that done in the next twelve months. Um. And yes, once it's completed, we'll be able to put things away into the garage. We're also doing work on the house. Um. But yeah, we're looking to, we'll continue going with the house after twelve months, but. At the moment, our schedule to have the garage completed is twelve months.
Will the garage be capable of. Storing, uh, construction materials, uh, still to be used on the unfinished house or. Will those be outside? Would you guess?
It would probably be used, um. To, yeah, it would be, some of the area of the garage would be used. For what, for, as a workshop area. Um. In conjunction with doing work on the house. Um. Some materials would be stored inside the house and some materials would be stored outside. Um, usually when you have a, a truck deliver. A pallet load of materials that sort of gets dropped outside, um, but yeah, we'd be able to move some things into the garage. Uh, but we still tend, we still plan to utilize the stockpile site area to store materials.
I, I'm sorry. Sorry, I, I, when, when was the construction started?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the kickoff, um. The kickoff was, uh, fifth of January this year.
And when was the building, uh? What, what's the date of the, uh, cause I don't have the plan. In front of me, but you submitted a, a plan for a, um. Construction of a new garage. When was that done?
The. I have those dates in front of me. The, 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 the plan, um. Is dated May of, of twenty. Uh, twenty-two. Um, and that was for conservation. The building permit was issued November twenty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Makes sense, so. It's been going on for six months, basically, or, or you've had the, the, uh, permit. For six months and you've been constructing for, by, for four months now. Roughly.
It was, it was difficult to start in the middle of winter, so we, we did what hold off until a little bit better weather. Um, until we knew that we'd get a good run at it. So, um. So, yeah, we waited until, um, January to start it.
The other board members, um, we'll come back to John, but.
Yeah, I have a. I guess an observations. I think. There's a fine line that is probably in the eye of the beholder between junk and antiques. But I think in this case we can. Give the benefit of the doubt to the antique. Classification. The problem that I have is that if the truck bed, blue one. Is being used for storage of materials. It's structured. Instructor shouldn't be in the setback.
Why can't, so to Dave's point, why don't you move, why can't you move the. Uh, truck, uh, into the rear middle of your lot? Why does it have to be right next to the Ren's house?
It's at the very, it's at the very rear of our property. Um, so it is further from the street and more difficult to see from the street. So the idea was that we'd have it on the back of our property line. Um, which is. Uh, keeping it, keeping, trying to keep the place tidy from. Um, people looking in from the street, I guess. So if, if I was to move it into the middle of the yard, then it would be. A lot more highly visible from passersby.
It also would impede our children being able to play outside. So we have a trampoline. We have children coming through the yard. So we're trying to keep the construction materials. Contained to an area.
Which is a setback, certainly.
I, I'd like to also make the comment that we actually are living in the house while we do this construction work, so. Uh, we, we are planning to keep the place looking tidy and respectable, um. Uh, you know, as, as we, uh, we live here with our two children, so. Uh, you know, we like to keep all of the construction materials tucked away if we can and not have them strewn around the middle of the yard.
Right, just an observation, I mean, I, I'd worry less about passersby and more about my neighbors, uh, in terms of. You know, what's visible and what's, what's intrusive, um, I mean. A pastor, passersby is not. It is likely not even part of the neighborhood, could be, but. Um. There's also an undercurrent here, but I, I.
Can I, can I make a comment about that? So. The. Material stockpile section is at the back of our property. The Rens own a sixty-foot strip of land behind that. It is far away from their house and actually without single existing garage. Not even that visible. So Mrs. Ren and the Rens would have to walk around. To that section of the yard to be able to see this, which is what they've done in this case. So I mean, it is as far away from their house as possible. Within our property line. It's not close to their house. It's not really impeding their activity. They have a sixty-foot strip of land behind our house that is the location of the stockpile.
I hear you. It's also sort of a, a, a visual issue, but the, and the other thing that I think Mike was getting at is how long. Is this likely to go on? I mean, if it's a, if it's a all hands on deck project and, and proceeding apace. It's one thing, you can sort of see the end. The end down the road, if it's, uh, you know, a little bit here and a little bit there and it starts to drift into two, three, four years. A project, I think that's probably unacceptable. Uh, in terms of the bylaws. Now, we, we were not deliberating that. Point or questioning veracity. I'm just making an observation that. Obviously, any, any construction is going to be messy. But people try to. Um, be expeditious about it. And. That's all.
I would not like it to go for two, three or four years either.
No, I mean, nobody really would. I mean, I, I, I'm just. I guess making a point. Um.
Um, but these material stockpile areas, right? Like you identified on the plan, because you know, the photos that. That we were provided are a lot of, you know. To David's points, antiques or, uh. You know, truck beds, things of that nature. Now, by putting, you know, two by four piece of wood into those. Objects. Um, you know, I. I guess what I'm asking is. What are you considering this? Material stockpile area, like what, what types of things in it? We'd be used to seeing like crushed stone that's being, you know, put into a trench or, um. Soils that are stockpiled. And I would question if they have to be put into these types of objects. I would think that'd be more accessible to. The construction if they were. You know, put in that stockpile area as dictated, as dictated on the plan, but it, but in an actual pile and then. You know, we've even seen things where, you know, those piles create dust in the summertime. They sometimes have to be hydro-seated to, you know, contain dust, things of that nature. But. You know, from what I'm gathering, part of your explanation of these objects is that. You're putting some of these, these materials into them, which is making them part of that material stockpile area. Is that. Your interpretation of it?
Uh, yeah, that is correct. So there is, there's two truck beds there, uh, both of. O- one is a truck bed that is, goes with the truck and the other truck bed is parts. Um, because one of the truck beds is rusted and needs to be repaired, so I'm gonna make two truck beds into one good truck bed. Um, at the moment, the truck beds are in the material stockpile site and one of the truck beds is filled with. Uh, rough cut lumber, which is seasoning, so it is, it has been, uh, it's. Drying out, it needs to dry out, uh. Uh, it needs a dry, a dry place to, to, um, stack and dry. Uh, and that, that will be used in the house when, when, when we renovate the house. And the other truck bed that is also in the material stockpile area. I have just been using to throw offcuts in. I have my drop saw set up and as I cut through lumber and whatnot. You know, I, I throw the shortened lengths in there or any offcuts that collect in there. Um. As sort of a, just a temporary spot to put things and sort of shuffle things around so that. It gets it out of the way, keeps things neat, I'm not tripping over things, um. So I'm kind of u- utilizing. Uh, two things in the one area.
One, one of the, one of the gray areas, uh, and, and whether we'll. You know, resolve it tonight or not, I don't know, but, um. Our table of uses. Says that, um, automotive repair garages. Are not allowed in a residential zone. And, uh, so if you're repairing on an automobile and the truck is certainly automotive. It's, uh, not allowed. And, uh, as, as an automo- automotive graveyard and another junkyard, you'd expect. Not to be allowed, and that's true. It's not allowed, but repair work. Uh, is not allowed. It doesn't say whether it's, uh, repairs of your own. Equipment or, uh, repairs for, uh, hire. Um, it, the, the bylaw is vague on that, but. I think you've got to be sensitive to the fact that. Um. The, the, these kind of things don't go on in residential districts in Cohasset. These kind of uses. I'm hard pressed to. Uh, remember many. I can, I remember a few and I can remember a couple that were shut down. Because people were, were being a little too, um, enthusiastic about repair work. And it bothered, it upset the neighborhood, which is one of the. Um, premises or the purposes of a zoning bylaws to protect the neighborhood's value and the quality of life, so. I'm not even sure you qualify, but, um, we can set that aside for the moment. But I, I think, uh. I think time is essential. I think if, if we. Were to go ahead in this, I would certainly insist that the construction be completed. As of X date or a certain finding, uh, fines. Uh, be levied, um, I'm still not. Satisfied with, uh, storing, uh, trucks and, and, and things right, uh, essentially on a lot line. But, um, I don't know, um, Dave.
Woody, I think the. In the table of uses, the bylaw. Requires a special permit even for temporary structure for storage.
Yeah.
Materials or equipment. So, you know, just the fact that it's there. Technically, I think requires a special permit regardless of whether it's in the setback. And. I don't see an exception. In the bylaw that says that you can. Put a structure. In the setback.
And, and a.
If you're gonna take, take it out at some point, you know.
And a, and a structure, as we know, is, is, is differentiated from a building and Dave is right about structures, but, uh. You know, a building has a roof and things like that. A structures, uh, provide support. Support for, in this case, uh, lumber, be a fresh cut or not. Um. You know, uh. Anyway. Just, um, I'm, I turn, I, I don't know, I haven't heard from Attorney Mitchell in quite a while. I assume he's still, yes, there you are. Would you like to, um, chime in at this point? I, I, I think this is sort of a back and forth and I'd like to get John Howland's take, but, um.
But. As you said before, I think time is, is one of the keys here. I mean, that truck's been there according to Barbara for over a year. Um, and it seems to construct a garage, um, is gonna take. You know, a year and six months or however long it's gonna take is a little bit excessive, um, so. I mean, in terms of time, that's an issue, um, with these things that are on the, on the property line and the, and the fact that they're on the property line in the rear of the property. Doesn't really make any difference to, to my client. She uses the back part of her property for gardening. So, um, she is back there and she can see it. Um, and, you know, in terms of. Uh, the storing of the construction material within the blue bed, you know. I think, you know, that probably does qualify as a structure under the bylaw. And therefore requires a special permit, so. You know, for, for variety of reasons, I think these things have to be moved and, you know, there has to be a date. I think from the board in order to have that done.
That would seem. Logical, yeah, and just. To, um. Help complete the, the thought about a structure. A co- is a combination of materials combined at a fixed location to give support or shelter. And it can be of, of any number. And it can be of of any number of things, but it's a. At a fixed location to give support and shelter, and I think in this case, the flatbeds are. Serving as Dave points out as. Structures and structures in. Setbacks and so on and so forth are not allowed. Which means that they are not allowed without a special permit. And and that special permit has to be predicated on. Um. The any detriment to the neighborhood, either either uh. Visual or physical or noise or light or anything else that. Uh, may spill over uh. Property lines, so. I don't know, I'm. I'm I'm, I remain concerned here that um. This, this project could go on for quite a while and um. And and it's intruding really on uh on setbacks which are designed to protect. Now neighboring properties. But, you know, John Helen, where do you, where are you on this one so far? I I don't think they've. Complied entirely with the letter of your. March twenty second. Letter, I I mean, I think that might have been their intention, but.
Yeah, uh, uh, thanks, I I know it's uh, we'll probably delve into the uh uh. The gray area, if you will, you know, it's not a black and white situation for anyone that, you know, it we could be um. You know, there is, it it our saw horse is a structure that supports stuff we put on there, so. You you know, it's a fine line, it it, you know, is is changing oil. In your home garage, is that is that a business, no, you know, so I I I think the board might be. Leaning more towards uh, you you know, I think. Bu- both parties' best interest might be here is to is is to, you know, again. Get the structure up in a. You know, timely, efficient manner, and and a lot of this stuff will. Will be taken care of by restoring the equipment inside, and 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 this would kind of. Start to bring some uh, you know. Stability to the to the neighbors, you know, there is the construction takes time and stuff like that, but I think a reasonable effort. Is and should be made by the uh. Harrison's, you know, to get that structure built, so it's, you know, signs like if the if the board might request that. You know, that timeline is at least something we can monitor and and shoot for to get this. Uh, you you know, to get everyone's concerns, um, you know, met, uh, you know, I I think certainly um. The Rens and Attorney Mitchell would be, you know. Satisfied with that, with again, completion of the building and and getting the. The the equipment in question in indoors, uh, you know, to help protect them and and everyone and as well as the the Harrison, so. You you know, I I think as far as a. Uh, a violation, I just, I think we just want to maybe. Step back and just keep in mind that the goal is to get this project done so that they could be there and maybe we can. Uh, you know, can ask the um, the the people to kind of. Uh, you know, give us a guideline as to when that could be done so that we could expect this to to go from a um. You know, a temporary situation of out to a storage to a permanent situation of indoor. Storage.
Yeah, I've heard kind of different, I mean, attorney. Time and um, the applicant, uh, Paul. Harrison said, you know, maybe a year or so, are are you, by the way, uh, Mr. Harrison? Uh, the contractor yourself, or uh, are you, is this a? Do it yourself?
Well, I'm the homeowner and I'm I'm G C ing the project myself, I've got some. Experience um. In carpentry, my trade is carpentry.
No, it's fine, I'm not, I'm not here to, you know, uh. Uh, question your credentials, I'm just wondering if the burden of completion is is on your shoulders alone, or or do you, is there? Are there crews who? Are there to help or to do the work?
Uh, I will have crews there and I'll also be doing some of the work myself.
Yeah, which is perfectly. Perfectly fine, particularly if you're capable of it, it's a good way to save money, attorney time and what what? Kind of a timeline should we be, would you? Find. Um. Maybe not enthusiastically acceptable, but minimally acceptable, because if this goes on too long. I mean, we're gonna be back here and then probably, you know, with a little more grumpy than we are right now, so.
No, I understand that, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, and. You know, my clients have indicated that they have every expectation. That the garage project will be completed within. A year, I mean, obviously, you know, things can can arise, um, you know, crews not showing up and so on. Um, and so. You know, I think if the board were inclined to afford them that period of time. And after that period, if for some reason something hasn't been completed and there's still. Um, materials in the stockpile area that shouldn't be there in the board's judgment or in Inspector Helen's judgment, then. You know, we could, we could come back, we could seek an extension or something like that, but. Um. You know, I would just note again that that. You know, it's a, it's an active construction project as the board understands. There is this stockpile area that was pre- pre-designated in the setback area. And I think that would allow, you know, all of these same construction materials to be there. And be on the ground, and it just happens through kind of the idiosyncrasies of. Um, of some of the things that that are in the property. Um, that that blue, you know, flatbed is being used for that purpose, I think it's, you know. I I understand that by the letter of the structure definition that maybe that could be shoehorned into a structure, I have my. Doubts as to whether it truly. You know, is is a structure, and I would also just note to the the bylaw provision that Attorney. Mitchell has relied on here three hundred forty, four point three C, I mean, it talks about. Um, discarded articles and materials that are ready for destruction or have been stored or collected for salvage or conversion to some of the use, and again, these are. Uh, Paul Harrison described it, these are. Byproducts of the construction, so. You know, this isn't a junkyard, it's not an auto repair facility, it's a, it's a project that's been permitted. And yes, it's it's ruffling some feathers. Of the neighbors on, you know, what are too tightly. Um, bound up lots, um. But that's a long-winded way of of saying, Mr. Chairman, that I I, my clients definitely are interested in. Getting this completed as quickly as they can and they. Set out a twelve month um objective. For uh for doing that.
Okay, I mean, that's. And Attorney Mitchell, what might your client, and you may want to. Certainly. Confer, so we're not gonna close the hearing tonight, but um with your client, but what conditions, both time and. And uh visual, um. Would you find? Acceptable, again, not in the ideal, but in the. I I can live with that kind of uh premise.
I'm sorry, I had my, I had my hand raised, but.
I'm sorry.
No one was calling on me, um, I just, I mean, these are cast off. Flatbed, you know, pieces of trucks, and I just. Like where on any construction site would they be used to store materials, I. I don't see that, and I do see them from my property, not just from the rear of my property, but from the center of my property. Um, I, you know, I just. They are highly visible. And I, again, I feel that they are cast off. Vehicle parts and not related to. The construction site.
Okay, and what I'm. Seeking, I think, is, is there, is there a a compromise, and it doesn't have to be developed. Uh, down to the letter tonight, but is there a willingness to? Think about if this could uh project could proceed expeditiously and certain accommodations made. Can? You uh. Mrs. Ren and others uh. Kind of live with this for a while, not forever, not the way it looks exactly today, but. You know, as a transition. I I don't know, I'm not um. I'm I'm not the one to suggest the conditions, but I. I think there may be uh. Sort of some mid-ground here, but not. That uh. Anyway. I don't know how the board feels, I I.
Would offense make a difference?
With a what?
Offense. Make a difference.
I don't know.
I think that's really not the issue, the issue is the bylaw and the junk on the property.
But if that, if that junk, just to play devil's advocate, were were to be removed. Permanently uh within X period of time, I don't, you know, let's not worry about what. Um, would that make a difference if you knew it was gonna go away?
Yes.
I don't know, other thoughts on the part of the board or John, I mean, is there something that we could do? Uh, I. That that wouldn't, that wouldn't um. Injure either side unnecessarily. I'm not looking for penalties here, I'm looking for a way to kind of. Compromise and kind of. Hold my nose maybe, but uh. You know. Be done with with what's what's offensive uh in in a reasonable period of time or or.
So may I offer just one more piece of information?
Sure.
Has not come up yet, is that the white vintage truck, which is a restoration project, and obviously beauty is in the eye of the beholder. Is actually already scheduled to be spray painted. So. It's in the process of being restored and within a number of months now. As you may be aware, these spray painting stores take their time, and so we're on the schedule, we've been booked in for a couple of months already. But that is going to disappear and come back as a shiny. White truck that no one should hopefully be offended by, and that will be in the next couple of months. I don't know the exact date, but as a next step, I'm happy to find out that exact date, but that will take away. The whole. You know, junk of the uh antique white truck, so that is. But that is.
It's gonna come back in one piece?
It is going to come back in one piece. Yes.
Matt, where do you come out?
Yeah, I mean, like I stated, and I was just. Taking a look back at the. Actually, I'll just briefly share my screen too on the photos um. Which were uh. Able to see my screen now? I know.
It may be on its way. But I'm still seeing you and everybody else.
Stay. Maybe you won't let me, um. Actually, can, can you see?
Wait a minute, there we go.
You know, I think. I think, and this is the the white truck, right, that was referenced, you know, I. What I don't wanna, what I don't wanna encourage is to have, you know, like. These. Because they're not associated directly with construction. For things to be put in them to justify it as a material stockpile. Um. You know, so just looking at some of the stuff that's out there, you know, it does look like it's. Not actively involved with. Construction, which would. You know. In my mind. You know. Have us looking towards, well, what? What can be tidied up, what can be um? Improved along that. Space um. You know, so that the material stockpile is more utilized for. You know, its intended purpose, which was. Materials directly really directly involved with. Construction, um. You know, I think like this picture here, like putting wood into the back of the truck. Is a little bit um. You know, of a. Of a stretch for me as far as um. It being involved in construction at the same point, you know. Um.
It could be.
If if somebody, if somebody's looking at a pile of, you know, sawdust and and materials on the ground. Um. You know, and we were looking at pictures of that, and and we looked at the site plan and said, well, you know, there's some material stockpile that was permitted in that area, and this stuff comes and goes. I think I could justify it a little bit more, I think. I am having a hard time with the objects, if you will, being. Um. You know, kind of referred to as this material stockpile area, um. So I would think that maybe. That, you know, and I and I did hear Mrs. Harrison say that, you know, that the truck is um on its way to be refreshed and would probably then maybe. Be a different location. I think maybe they could take a harder look at. You know, what objects along that area could be um. More strategically placed or um. You know, maybe aren't needed for the direct construction. And then. You know, propose. Uh. Kind of a, an arrangement with. With the neighbor and us, but that's, that's kind of where I. Come out on it.
Hey, Mike, where do you, where do you come out on this, you've got a lot of planning board experience and other kinds of experiences that. Don't, may not directly deal with this, but certainly uh indirectly.
Yeah, well, um, you know, I I I I guess this is kind of unique in in my experience, um. Uh, 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 and uh. Uh, that that makes uh makes it a little difficult for me to kind of tease out. Um. I uh. I I I guess, I I and, you know, no offense to uh intended uh uh. The Harrisons, but you know, if my neighbors were were kind of storing a bunch of stuff around the yard and. You know, well, maybe it'll take a year, but maybe it'll take longer, and we've already been at it for six months. I guess I'd prob- probably be pretty uh pretty upset, so uh, you know, I, it seems unfair to me. That you're kind of taking advantage of the goodwill of your neighbors, and to be honest, I guess I sympathize with with uh with with their patience running thin. And you know, you can either do the job or you can't. And uh frankly, I think eighteen months to build a garage seems to me to be too long. So, you know. You should either pick up the pace or get additional help to get get it done. In a timely fashion, so as to try and continue to maintain some kind of good relations with your neighbors, because frankly, I think that's pretty important. But, you know, my opinion.
This is well said.
Or you can find some other place to store the antiques.
Yeah, offsite. Possibly.
Uh. Woody, just a. Just a quick comment if you, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Uh, so so perhaps I I think we're leaning, uh, you guys have brought up some great questions and um on on both sides, uh. Perhaps uh what we could do is uh. Uh, you know, uh, the. On or about July one and September first, we could have a couple of site inspections, at least see what has progressed, there was some stuff that. Uh, you know, for example, we know the truck is is being removed to be painted, so we can get the bearings, we'll. You know, again, see where the framing status is of the building, so at least there might be some updates uh to to kind of base our status on. There a more manageable way, uh, you know, if that's a topic, it's, you know, kind of sets up other sites for September, is the roof on, is it, you know, ready to? Just sort of some of the stuff, so we could get some. Timeframe on if we could maybe. You know. Kind of to 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 keep the, because I I think everyone wants things to move along, uh, uh, there to get there, so so perhaps. You know, between now and. July, we could uh. Give them some time to get this. Move along, do our inspection, get an update as to where we're at and the status, and then to get to see some improvement. And and, you know, uh, to see that continue, so at least we can put some steps in place, uh. Or mechanisms, you know.
Yeah, we'd have to agree in those mechanisms. It's it's more though, John, you know, than just a. A conversation and, oh gosh, we've slipped behind or we're on schedule, I mean, I, you know, I think. As as Mike says, it doesn't take a year and a half to do a garage, I've never heard of that. Um, I mean, there could be supply chain issues, you know, the doors, garage doors don't come in or. Windows, but and I know that's been a problem, but. Um, th- this project has to be moved, moved along quickly to get all this stuff off the. Uh, out of sight. I mean, it's just, I mean, you know, whether it's an antique or a wreck. Uh, doesn't much matter if it looks like it's uh not being used and it's it's derelict and sitting there. Um. It it's not acceptable in terms of the bylaws. I mean. That's, that's my, my point of view now, um. Yeah, you've had, Mrs. Ren, you've, Barbara, you've had your hand up.
Oh, I, that was before, but I've I.
Oh, I that was before, but I I let me lower it, I I said what I wanted to say, thank you.
I I I'm just wondering if, and I I'll I'll turn to you, Attorney Mitchell. Um, would it be at all productive for you uh for both sides to get together perhaps with John and say, look, what is a reasonable and acceptable um um pick up the pace uh timeframe and acceptable uh staging of materials uh so that um uh you know, we don't go um uh too too much in one direction as opposed to the other, this is a project is going to have have materials, it's going to look like hell from time to time, it's going to be messy, but that's no excuse for taking uh an excessive amount of time and and maybe there are things that can be done either on or off site uh in terms of. But this board, this board can't negotiate those sort of things, I mean, I think both sides have to say, look, I can, my my clients or whatever, your clients can participate, but they can live with this or they can't. You know, we're either at between a rock and a hard place, or we think there's a way that we could um um coexist uh on a reasonable timeframe and if uh something goes awry, uh we'll have some, as John Helen says, some um um steps uh so to signal that things have are gone off track and we can figure out whether that's a uh an issue of uh will and intention or uh supply chain or, you know, the vic- vicissitudes of construction.
I'd be happy to sit down with John and Ben and see if we can work something out, it's always better than uh than not.
Yeah, I I I guess what I'd suggest is if you could do that between now and June, we can continue the hearing. And and uh there could be a report back, I want John part of it because he's going to be the enforcement agent in this case. Um, you know, we we think we have a compromise that we can live with, that's, you know, a good compromise, nobody gets everything. You know, there's sort of a disappointment in a good compromise on both sides, but um we think it's livable. And if we if we stick to it, um you know, this will all be over.
Another question, what's the upside down truck bed? This one here.
Uh that that is the truck bed that's off the antique truck that's being restored. And I'd also just like to point out that these photos were taken before we started construction of the of the job, so we'd actually were just moving things around the yard at that point.
So what's this truck bed?
Uh which one are you pointing to now?
This white one next to the frame of the truck.
Same one.
Yeah, that's that's all part of the same truck.
Just moved.
It's this, yeah, it's the same truck, but it's just been moved around.
Okay.
Photos taken on different dates there.
There were photos submitted that I took on April twenty second that are online on the on the town's website.
Well, I think, you know, it's be nice if a compromise gets worked out that satisfies everybody, but I, you know. If I was looking out my window, I'd be thinking my neighbors have a bunch of junk on the property line. And whether they call it storage for a construction site or antiques or whatever they call it, it's junk that I have to look at every day. And I think your neighbors have been fairly tolerant thus far, and I if if it were me, I I wouldn't, I if I bought the it's storage for the construction stuff, I want you to get a special permit like the bylaw says. And I want it out of out of the uh.
The uh. Out of the setbacks.
So, you know, you can, I would suggest that you make every effort to accommodate your neighbor here, including getting the stuff stored offsite, the the vehicle stuff. But this, I, I mean, I I understand your position, um but I don't buy it.
And it just doesn't happen in Cohasset, I mean, I can't, you you know, there there probably, there's always an exception to the rule. And somewhere there is an exception or two, um I won't give you any hints, but um I I I really think this is this is uh in 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 our in opposition or inconsistent, I I would say, with the the kind of uh residential neighborhoods we have in Cohasset, so you you folks all have a sense of where this board is leaning and it's and as to uh let's fix this as as quickly as possible, um but we're not, we're not trying to um uh entirely decide with 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 one party uh and and not give a bit to the other, I'd like to see a compromise here. And whether one side has to give a little more than the other is a is a probably in the eye of the beholder, but um I'd suggest that we continue this until June, I with a great expectation that um we could get a status report. We either have come to a meeting of the minds or we're eighty percent there, or there's no way in hell uh one side or the other can can give, and so then it'll be up to us to impose certain conditions. And if that's uh where it comes out, I'm quite prepared to do so, but I'd much rather see see harmony uh harmony reign and and a and a realistic plan. I mean, you don't want me to be the clerk of the works instead of a timetable, because uh I'm totally unequipped for that, so. Would that be acceptable to both attorneys and you, John?
That's fine with me.
Yes.
I'm available.
Okay, great, it would that be, if that's acceptable to the board, I would make a motion to continue this hearing until June sixth. Uh primarily to deal with um um a project plan going forward. Okay, uh moved and seconded, all in favor, Woody Chitikai?
Lee Darcey.
Uh Mike Dickey, I.
Okay. Great, so the board's voted six to zip to meet with you all. Um, and it would be better to um, don't inundate us with uh uh preliminary drafts of things, I mean, kind of work this through your yourselves as a, feel free to, John, to bring anybody else you wish to into this discussion, but or discussions, but um what I'd like to see is kind of the best possible work product um that can be done in the next three plus weeks.
All right, if uh if I could just ask you, if you're going to reach out. Then we can.
Okay, I I think we're we're agreed, we're gonna give it the old try, give it a shot, and um. So that's been done, so we will see you all next month.
Thanks for your time, Cameron.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, I mean, it's a complex, it's a complex situation, and I don't think either party uh has a monopoly on on being right here, um so we shall go forward. Um Cassandra, there are two only two other things, meeting minutes. And we should probably approve the June sixth meeting, oh my God, we probably should have done that first. Is everybody okay in June six for for June sixth meeting? Yeah, cross our fingers, all right.
I I may have, I may have a conflict, I have a conference, I think in San Diego. So I think I'm flying out uh Monday night, the fifth.
Okay, um I I know how badly you're gonna want to be patched in on Zoom, but uh you you may have to. Well, well, we'll have a.
Yeah, no, no, I I, you know, uh I I could probably actually come to think of it, I I could probably do that. I could at least give it a try anyway.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be cocktail hour, it'll be a little before dinner, uh California time, so. We shall see, all right, well, I hope so, uh I hope we can get you there, but um with that being done, I think we're set on the sixth and do do, are we prepared to vote on the uh meeting minutes from uh um April? I had one small edit that I gave Cassandra, but other than that, it looked fine.
Yeah, I had no problems with them.
What, Matt, Charlie?
Good with it, yeah.
I had no problems, I wasn't at the meeting, but I certified that I watched all three hours and nineteen minutes on fast, no.
Bless your soul.
It only took me two hours, I uh I had it on double speed, though, I think we should do all of our meetings on double speed, uh but um but yes.
Speak quick.
It was very quick. But it was, I did speed it up, somebody told me the trick, the speed up the. Can we touch like this thing over the fast? Well, you can't go that fast, but you did, you did, you were speeding up, you and Adam Brodsky were like I was like, good, they just have to do this every.
Um that dock on uh Nichols Road or Jerusalem Road.
That the what, the what on? Oh, the dock, yes.
That's, it's been continued, but did they withdraw the special permit application, or are they going to have a concurrent variance in special permit application?
Uh I believe the intent is that they're going to have a concurrent variance. Um, I received notification today from Adam Brodsky's office that they um have sent that application via FedEx and it should be arriving tomorrow, um so I haven't really seen it yet, um but it is coming. Um and I haven't received any information about them withdrawing the special permit application.
So that be on for June?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You think they'll be ready?
I presume so.
Okay. All right, yeah, we've got a few of these sort of staging in the background, but um uh Black Horse Lane being a big one and I remain puzzled about Atlantica, but John isn't, John's gone, I, at what point does that become abandoned, I wonder, that's just a hypothetical question, I'm not drawing a conclusion, but.
Atlantica?
Atlanta, well, that site. I mean, nothing is going on there as far as I know, I think they've got chapter ninety one, okay.
Well, how long's premise good for two years, right?
Yeah. I've heard that the Salt House may not open this year because they have a common kitchen with Atlantica, which has not been built.
I I I heard there the old Salt House is looking at um some kind of, you know, food truck as an option. That's what I heard, but you know, that 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 that's scuttlebutt, so please, please don't.
Yeah, so they've probably, what, they've probably got another year to run, be before, and they can request a continuance. But but not forever a day, but. Yeah, well, anyway, okay, I don't know, and I heard last night that somebody brought up again the clever notion of using the Oaks as a town hall. Cassandra gets the swimming pool area up up at the top level there.
Can I have the dock?
Yeah, okay, ah, I I wanted the dock.
There's enough room for both our boats.
Okay, well, yeah, I guess you're right.
Um, not to interrupt, but I don't think you technically voted on the minutes.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of uh my uh April that um were in our packet.
Second.
All in favor, Woody Chitikai?
Lee Darcey.
Uh Mike Dickey, I.
All right, it's uh.
Beautiful, and so I'd make a motion to adjourn, and if it's your, I I'm inclined to see to see um Chris Senior and maybe Jack Creighton and say, is there a way, I I would personally like the option of meeting in person and if somebody can't or um the audience, you know, doesn't want to sit around for three hours in town hall, that's perfectly fine to have a hybrid. But I I do sort of miss the efficiency of pointing to something and then everybody sees the same thing and everything, but.
Um, I just have a question, did sixty-three nickels, the retaining wall, is that gonna go out for a draft?
That was going to be my next question is, do we want to assign the draft for sixty-three nickels and the forty-six? Appeal.
Pretty good notes on the nickels one uh.
Okay, you want to do the nickels? Okay, and um sixty-two Spring Street, I mean, they're gonna give us statistics, but I don't think there's anything of uh substance there, it's just that we need a plan.
Yeah, I just on that Spring Street one, that um the plot plan didn't show the neighboring properties, you know, I don't want to cost these people any more money, but it might, might have actually helped them if they could, if properties on the either side would help them average to to have a shorter front setback, but um it's just we still. Plot plans only.
Yeah, I I walked that occa- occasionally, I just can't remember, I mean, these houses were, my guess is all built by the same person back back in the day, I mean, they've been extensively overhauled, but
Mm-hmm.
You know, um Cassandra, how about asking that they add um the uh just just the outline of the two neighboring properties, but but including a porch, I mean, I want, you know, the structure. Not the uh just the dwelling.
I thought I had asked them originally for that, um but I can follow up on.
I bet you did, I'll bet you did, but do it again and tell them that um this might be to their advantage, it was gonna cost them a little something, but it it, you know, we don't need a a an architectural uh work of art here.
So I don't understand why the engineers don't do it as a matter of course, because they know.
Keep asking for it, and they and and they they go back and have to do it, I mean I I bet they're not giving their clients even the option, they're explaining. Such as with uh Roger Pompy, I don't see where he gets a six foot setback by averaging two pro, I don't know where he gets two properties.
Well, I mean, you better show us.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Okay.
If it's not, if that's not the frontage, if the frontage is James Lane.
Yeah.
Then that's a sideline, it's not a front, so he doesn't get the benefit of the averaging.
Right, he may, you know, yeah, the um eight foot may be a little excessive, I I think it's a ten foot set side setback, isn't it, in that area, that's a village. It's village business, I don't know. But um yeah, that that they seem to be all over the lot, and she didn't. Strict VB. Side setback is ten feet. So if they're going from ten point one to eight feet, they're creating a non-conformity. And certainly by the law, I mean, you know, that puts them into variance territory, not that they couldn't qualify, but um but I think we would have to address that and and uh deal with it. So anyway, we'll we'll see, I I think she's probably two hearings away. Next hearing will be, it's almost like a fresh hearing because her application doesn't match any of the drawings anyway. No, I mean, it's anyway, um, okay, so what's, oh, uh sixty-two, who wants to do sixty-two Spring Street?
I think Charlie already.
You assigned it.
Great, Charlie, perfect, I knew you'd, um let's see, okay, that's that, this one is still continuing. Um, so everything else is uh in process, so those are just the two, so Matt and Charlie will give us um, you know, kind of a briefish decisions. So I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Ah, that's cute, the old, the old high school trick, okay, um all in favor, Woody Chitikai?
Lee Darcey.
Uh Michael Dickey, I.
Yeah, Watkins, I.
Great, okay, thanks. Great, okay, thanks, guys.